God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Well, God our Father, we assemble here again this evening before you, Lord, are the leaders of this community. Father, our prayer continues to be for understanding, for wisdom, for knowledge, for that which will best help this community to grow and thrive. Father, we pray again for those kind of things that only you can provide. Pray your blessings upon our families, upon our children as they get ready to be released from schools. Upon our police and fire department, God, thank you for the services they provide and your protection for them. Thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please continue standing for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Amen.
Mr. January, can you do roll call, please?
Yes, Mrs. President. Vice President Neal.
Here.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards.
Present.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton.
Present.
Councilwoman Uselak.
Here.
Councilman Pettit.
Here.
Councilwoman Hardaway.
Here.
President Bella, absent. Six present, one absent.
Thank you. We'll have the petitions, communications, and acknowledgements. We have the Employee of the Month for May. Mr. Griffin?
Madam President, thank you. I'm excited about all of these that I do. And I always try to think about what will I say is the predicate or idea forming remarks. And I thought about this one. So bear with me. Earlier in my life, I explored whether I had a call to ministry. I do not. But people knew that I'm a big fan of homiletics and good preaching. And I often have said that in addition to the heroic civil rights leader that the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King was, we forget he was a great preacher.
Yes.
And I was given a book called A Knock Before Midnight that was a compelling combination or compilation of some of his sermons. And he had a sermon called The Three Dimensions of the Human Life. Now, I'm not going to do it the same kind of justice, but I'm going to borrow the concepts that he had to describe the person, but also the department that he works in. Planning and building is not like a police department is, where they're doing some of the most fundamental work of public safety, or a fire department, which does that. But man, if you like what's going on in our town, that houses are built on time and they're kept nice, you love what they're doing. And so there's really these three dimensions that I think of when I think of them. Said Dr. King, there is the inward dimension. And in this case, it's how they've prepared themselves to do their work. Ms. Shine knows our code better than anyone. I go to her all the time. So does her staff and the one that we're going to be celebrating tonight. That's the inward dimension, the preparation. Then there's the outward dimension. And man, all I get are notes sent to me all the time about a compliment I get about. Ms. Shine was so knowledgeable and patient and polite. And Ms. San Miguel, who we're honoring tight, or Ms. Wilson, who we might honor in the future, they're always getting a note on my desk that says how polite they were and how professional they were. I wish we could pay you a million, but until we can, thanks enough. So there's the inward dimension and the outward dimension. And then he pointed out the other one, the upward dimension. That's transcendent. That's how, when they do their inward work of getting ready for the day and their outward work of how they treat everybody, they elevate all of us in that outward dimension. All of us are made better because they're there being Maryville for us. And so Ms. San Miguel, will you come up, please? I picked that specially for you. For other departments, I apologize. It is my best one here, so. Ms. San Miguel, congratulations on being our Employee of the Month. I meant every word about that, both for you and all of your colleagues. Ms. Shine, will you read this to her as her presentation, please?
Certificate of recognition, Employee of the Month, May 2025. This certificate is proudly presented to Regina San Miguel. For your initiative to go above and beyond for Maryville Planning and Building Department, your friendliness, caring disposition, and eagerness to get the job done have shown us that you are invaluable to our department. Awarded this 14th day of November 2025. Michael Griffin, Town Manager, and Mrs. Kathy D. Pettit, HR Director.
I need a silence still, do I not?
So I just want to say that Regina is like the mother of the department. She mothers everybody. She comes in and she mothers every resident or developer that comes in. Come on in, sweetheart. Come on in. Have a seat. We love you. Come on in. So she is, as the certificate says, she's invaluable.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Congratulations to you, Regina, for being the Employee of the Month. Next, moving on. Next, moving on to our consent agenda for the accounts payable register voucher for the approval for May 27, 2025, ARP Accounts Payable Register Voucher Approval for May 27, 2025, approval of the Town Council Meeting Minutes on May 13, and approval of the Work Study Meeting Minutes on May 13, 2025, and affirmation of the President's reappointment of Deanne Patina to serve on the Lake County Convention Center and Visitors Bureau as Maryville representative. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Ms. Uselak, and it was second by?
Second.
Oh. I thought she.
I saw moved, it was Marge.
Oh, okay. Marge and Mr. Pettit. Next, we have our presentation of a declaration.
Voice vote, Madam Vice President.
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. January, can you do a?
Vote for it.
Roll call, please.
We do a voice vote. Ricardo?
With respect to the matter that was just determined, you need a roll call.
Oh, roll call, right. Okay, sure. All right. All right, Vice President Neal? The President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Hi.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Hi.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Thank you, Mr. January.
You're welcome. Madam President.
Motion.
Uh, motion passes. Six and seven in favor.
Six in favor.
Six in favor. Uh, next, we'll move on to our presentation, Declaration. Mr. January, if you would read the Town of Maryville Declaration?
Sure. Town of Maryville Declaration of the State of Indiana, the Town Council of Maryville recognizes the 250th birthday of the United States Army. Whereas on June the 14, 1775, the Second Continental Congress, representing the citizens of 13 American colonies, authorized the establishment of the Continental Army. And whereas, the collective expression of the pursuit of personal freedom that caused the authorization and organization of the United States Army led to the adoption of the Declaration of Independence and the codification of our country's basic principles and values in the Constitution. And whereas, for the past 250 years, the Army's central mission has been to fight and win our national wars. And whereas, the model of duty, honor, and country is the creed by which the American soldier lives and serves. And whereas, no matter what the cause, location, or magnitude of future conflicts, Americans can rely on their army to produce well-trained, well-led, and highly motivated soldiers to carry out the missions entrusted to them. And whereas, several citizens in the Maryville community have proudly served and made the ultimate sacrifice for our country's freedom while serving in the United States Army, past and other branches of our nation's military. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the Town of Maryville, Indiana hereby commend the soldiers of the United States Army, past, present, past and present, and recognize the historic significance of the June 14, 2025, as the 250th birthday of the United States Army. We express our appreciation of the citizens of Maryville to the United States Army and to the dedicated soldiers who have served for 250 years. Thank you all. Declare and sign by the following honorable of the Town of Maryville councilors and attested by the Honorable Clerk Treasurer this 27th day of May 2025.
Thank you, Mr. January.
Motion to approve, Madam President.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve by Shawn Pettit and a second by Marge Uselak, which is a voice vote. Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose. By his habit. Thank you all. We will move on to our Standing Committee Reports, Budget and Finance. I have no report for that tonight. The Street Department and Park Maintenance, Ms. Uselak.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. We are continuing with the Street Department cleaning up the branches and all the debris that has fallen throughout the last week or so with this strong winds. And we are also doing the beneficial, the beautification of the town with different plants that Steve and his department are planting. Correct, Steve?
Correct.
All right. And they have been picking up all these branches and they're doing the same old park maintenance, mowing the vacant lots, the bike trail, and all the trees that fell down during that storm. They also picked all those up. And that is my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Uselak. Uh, Council Affairs, Mr. Pettit.
Uh, yes, Madam Vice President. Uh, there is one, there were three outstanding ordinances that the Council Affairs Committee looked at, and Michael, um, we had discussed waiting on them. However, at our last Dean and Barbara White Community Center meeting and Parks meeting, Jerry and I and Michael talked. We have one of those ordinances on first reading, which we'll go into in detail. Michael, refresh my memory. Do you remember what the other two ordinances were that were pending in front of the committee?
Oh, yeah, I should have probably made a note about what we were waiting on. They were largely, uh, oh, they dealt, Madam President, I beg your pardon, I should be standing. One of them dealt with council rules. Partly, we were dealing with the issue of whether or not to move
That's right.
public comment from its current end of meeting place to the front. And there were some other modest changes that we're going to make on that. And I believe that we were also working on, um, some bylaws changes in addition to that. And then there was this that is really almost ready for primetime. It's certainly suitable for first reading. It would be my recommendation, if the council favors it this evening, to give it first reading, that it go back to the Council Affairs Committee, because we still have some policy questions that have to be worked out there to be recommended to you. Uh, but apart from that, I think I've covered what you were asking about.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, Ricardo, do you know if you and Joe have any other ordinances pending that the committee needs to look at?
I'm not aware of any.
All right, I'll check with them. Madam Vice President, um, that should take care of Council Affairs for now.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Personnel, Policy, and Employee Benefits, Ms. Hardaway.
I will defer. Steve, can you talk about the summer help and requirements?
Oh, yeah. So we were advertised for summer help. Right now, uh, the requirements are you got to be a graduating, uh, senior and college-bound and I'm not even sure what the pay is off the top of my head right now. But, um, you can apply online and we'd be happy to have, uh, anybody that's willing to help. I, I think the pay's $14 an hour. I'm not sure, but don't quote me on that.
And that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you very much. Environmental Affairs, Ms. Uselak.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. I believe the stormwater has been cleaning up a lot of the retention ponds and lakes in different subdivisions with chemicals to eliminate the algae. And I have a question for Matt Lake. I have read the stormwater report and on their agenda to, um, I want you to elaborate to me, Matt, regarding the Hendrick Street drainage analysis, because I see that that was done for $82,236.81. Maybe you could explain all of that to me.
Yeah.
And what did that cover? What, which Hendrick Street?
Uh, Hendrick Street, um, from Turkey Creek, uh, which is, uh, north of 73rd, all the way to the railroad tracks. That section there has been challenging for years. Um, it's a multifaceted approach to that aspect of that area, because you've got a wetland mitigation area and a wetland bank that the county is installing, and they also need proper drainage to control the water levels within that area. Another part of it wasn't just a drainage analysis. This included all the survey work and plans and specs. So it's probably underrepresented as an analysis. So it's a full-blown set of plans that we'll be receiving.
Okay, but that amount for $82,000, that was paid through the stormwater?
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to verify that
Yeah.
and the location.
Yeah.
Thank you, Matt.
Yeah, no problem.
And that concludes my report, Madam President. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety, Ms. Hardaway.
Madam President, no report.
Elections, public relations, and town beautification. Uh, we are still working on, um, well, we have finalized our last gateway sign, um, drawing. Um, so we're just waiting to finish finalize, uh, getting everything else finalized. The expectation is that, um, early fall, we should be doing some type of groundbreaking for, um, the gateway signs. And we have some more things that we've been talking about, planning to do, um, in addition with those. So more information to come. Um, next, we have Economic Development. That would be Mr. Pettit.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. We had both an RDA meeting and an RDC meeting, uh, moving the large bond issue for the three big projects, Whitcomb Street, the local road and street repaving, and the fire station, uh, moving those along. Uh, Mrs. Chilcot, Mr. Swentz, and Adam from Barnes and Thornburg were up, uh, for that. Uh, I do want to point out there, and I need to speak to Mr. Bella and Mr. Griffin for our Jan, uh, June 4th. Um, and we talked a little bit about this, Jerry, at the, uh, at our last Parks meeting. Sheila and Angie have been approached about what is called Union Park, the old Maryville lumber location, which Leona, I believe, tech, is actually in your side of Broadway there. Um, a gentleman wants to buy the property from us. And further discussions with, with Mike Neal and with Steve King, uh, the Moes Building has got some real problems for us. Um, and so the idea initially was that area was going to be the dog park. And the dog park is identified in the five-year master plan. But this gentleman is willing to buy the property from us. We need to determine that, that dollar amount. Ricardo, you and Joe. So Madam Vice President, what I'm going to do with you and Mr. Bella is ask for the June 4th workshop. Jerry and I and Sheila, we can go through all this with the rest of the council. Um, there's been some ideas at the committee meeting that the dog park maybe should go on Madison, on the property we own back at Town Hall, which I don't necessarily have a problem with. Um, I think we need to do something like that. Um, so that project is kind of economic development, park-related. Uh, and then we had a discussion, Michael and Angie and I had a discussion with Leona on a project in her ward, uh, the old Carriage House Building. Uh, the gentleman has been in three times at least, Leona?
Yes.
Uh, David Lewis, sons of David. And we're going to have one last follow-up meeting, uh, with what he's requesting to do. It's a two-story building, correct, or three-story residential.
I thought it was a two-story.
And, and offices that he wants to put on the northwest corner of Madison and 73rd. And he's looking to the RDC, uh, for some incentives. So we need to talk to him about that. So that'll be all.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Shawn, are we going to do anything with a dog park or for something for the doggies? If you remember.
For the doggies?
Yeah, for the doggies.
For the doggies, yes.
Mr. Jeff Minchuk had brought that up, and he was working
Yes.
quite diligently.
Yes, and, and that's something that we talked about. Jerry and I and the committee and the staff talked about that at our, uh, our meeting last Thursday. And that's where it came up, where the, the busyness of Broadway, it might be more conducive to put it back here off of Madison. You have sidewalks on Madison.
Right.
You have residential, both, you know, that's another dividing line between Leona and I. Both sides have residential. It's walkable. Uh, people can get to it, and it might be better served there. Now Jeff did have, if you remember, Jeff had that plan.
Sure.
But it was laid out in that triangle.
Right.
That is the Maryville lumber property that the guy wants to buy from us. So that's why.
Well, he spent a lot of time with that and a lot of meetings, and I'd just like to see something
Yeah.
come out of it.
I believe, Mr. Griffin, you had indicated that you were able to find a couple of pages on that design.
Mr., Madam President, with your permission.
Yes.
Council Pettit, they're in your mailbox.
Oh, they are? Okay.
Okay.
Because I should check my mailbox.
You better check.
All right, that's all I have, unless anybody else has a question.
No. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the utility lazy on.
There's no report, Madam President.
Okay, thank you. Parks Recreation, Barbara Dean, Community White, um, Center.
Uh, yes, Madam President. Uh, we had our, uh, standing fourth, uh, Thursday Committee meeting, um, with staff. Shawna was, uh, there in attendance. Uh, we had a resident, Mr. Messrich was there in, in attendance. Uh, we went through, uh, the ordinance that you'll see in front of you, which is the creation of a park board that has citizen members on it. Uh, as Michael alluded to, the, the one fine tuning I think we need is to determine the number of people that are on this. I believe this ordinance is written with four members, Michael.
That is correct.
And we need to decide on a tiebreaker. We probably need to have a fifth member. So that would be the discussion between, uh, first and second reading. Why I'm pushing for this, and Eric can allude to this probably in his report, there's a lot of money, ladies and gentlemen, sitting in that food and beverage tax fund that at some point, we're going to need to disperse and we're going to need to use. And, um, so I think a park board in doing some of the larger projects that Tagi, Arshami, and Jerry identified, uh, Michael in the plan, uh, one of them was a dog park. We talked about, and, and Jerry got, is getting estimates on cameras in the park. We had the discussion about putting one camera in every park and the dollar associated with that. Um, help me out, Jerry. I'm drawing a blank.
Uh, for each park, it'd be, or each camera, it'd be about $20,000.
Yeah.
So.
So we were talking about 10 parks. So, you know, right off the bat, you're $200,000. Um, the last estimate that we had, Margie, when, when Jeff was in office, I think the dog park was in the vicinity of $750,000 to $900,000. Uh, but again, that's
Where is that in this program?
No, that's, no, that was the cost estimate, not necessarily the money.
Okay.
And so
But that comes out of the food and beverage tax, too?
Well, it, it could.
It could?
And what the vision, or what we discussed at the committee meeting was, the, the park board will now have bonding capacity, and the debt service could be paid out of
Okay.
the food and beverage proceeds. And so they could have the ability to float a large bond issue and do the dog park, do the cameras. If they, if we decide we want to advise them, we want the building addition
Yeah.
uh, at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center. Um, that's something that, you know, we would need to discuss. But the first step is we've got to get the board established.
Right.
Uh, and then tweak this here in the month of June. And then obviously, we're going to have to ask for, uh, citizen input.
Sure.
Which is probably another item, Madam Vice President, that we need to talk to Rick about for the workshop on the 4th, is we got to fine tune this ordinance, correct, Michael?
Madam President, with your permission, yes, Counselor, we do.
So.
Okay.
Did I cover, dude, I get everything? Uh, you were working on, we, we talked about the flooring estimate. Um, I had asked Jerry, uh, because I drive by it every day going to work. There's a place called ICC Floors down by Maryville, the old Maryville Little League. And they had gotten a quote from them, um, that I guess you guys are reviewing and tweaking?
Uh, yes. I spoke with, uh, the salesperson that I've been working with, and, uh, I let him know that his number might be a little high.
Okay.
And we're still waiting to hear back from Core, um, after they're doing their forensic test on the floors. But, uh, if that number is too high, he said he can work another quote out to maybe knock it down a bit.
And they will. This, this is not, this is repairs to the hallway and the four rooms that we're not going to be responsible for.
Correct.
Core is going to take care of that cost, whoever Jerry and staff decide to use on the flooring. So, uh, and I think that's, I think that's it. If you think of something, Jerry, you can give it in your department report.
Well, I have a question, Madam President.
Yes.
For Eric January, our Clerk Treasurer, what do we have now in the food and beverage tax, the fund?
Sure.
How much is available at this time? That was your last?
That's current.
Balance?
We did, yes.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we have some money to do some work with.
But I would ask either Eric or Michael, that is based on February of '24, and that's not full participation. Is that correct?
Correct.
So at some point, the state's going to catch up with the ones that are not participating. And that could, that money could increase.
Sure.
Or that dollar amount could increase.
Oh, that's from February.
February of last year.
Okay, so we have more to come in, correct?
Well, we get paid every, um, a month
Three months?
from the food and beverage taxes. And that is the cumulative total that we had, uh, not since the, um, April 30th report, but that's current, because we did get a payment after April the 30th.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, Eric.
So as the state go back and catch up, they'll go back from the very beginning to recruit this fund?
Yeah, that's what's going to hurt, Madam Vice President. They're going to, somebody that's not participating is going to be paying, what are we at now, 16 months?
Yeah.
Four, 15 months? Yeah.
Yeah, and there are, there's going to be a plus and a minus. We'll, we'll have more that actually come to the fund. But we're also going to have people, uh, that have been paying into the fund that aren't obligated to pay for the fund.
Hmm.
And we, I've contacted some of them. They're still paying into the fund. So we can't give them money back, but the state will make adjustments to their future payments.
Very good. I have one more question, Madam President.
Why are they paying?
Because they're addressing.
For Mr. Eric January?
Yes.
Since we're talking about these taxes, do you have a balance on the wheel tax, where we're at with that?
I can look at the, um, I think I have a fund report.
I had a question on that last week from a constituent. And I had explained, that goes for all our roads and streets
Right.
in Lake County, correct?
In Maryville.
In Maryville only?
Correct.
Okay.
Because it's collected, uh, throughout the entire county.
Right.
But each municipality that has adopted it gets the wheel, uh, tax, right?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
Yeah, we, we use that, we use our wheel tax money. We use that as our, uh, matching, uh, for a matching, uh, community crossings grant. That's how we use our wheel tax.
Have you been using it, Steve?
Yeah, we use it every year, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Very good. I'm glad to hear that.
So we have $1,164,120.36 in the wheel tax fund.
Good. Thank you, Eric.
You're welcome. That concludes my report, too.
I'm all done, Madam Vice President.
Thank you. We'll move on to special committees, abandoned and blighted properties. On Council Sheet.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, and then the special town projects. Uh, we have our Fourth of July Parade, um, which is on July the 4th. We have the sensory-friendly, um, parade route that will start on 80th Place from Madison, 80th Place going down Madison Street, 80th and Madison, to Broadway. And then from Broadway up to 66. So keep in mind that the sensory-friendly are for residents or children or anyone who has, um, very sensitive to loud noises. So that's where the parade will be, like a silent parade. And then once they hit Broadway, then that's where they'll be able to play the music, the bands, the horns, and everything else. Um, the, uh, after the parade, the fireworks would be at Hidden Lake Park, um, so expect that. And, uh, the parade starts at 12 noon.
And where do they go from 80th Place to Broadway? How far down?
Um, so they'll be on Madison, Madison Street, and they'll go up 80th to Broadway. So it's just that one little stretch. It's the sensory-friendly area. So it's a very small path.
But they're going to go all the way down Broadway?
They're going to go, they're going to, on 80th, and they're going to go north up to 66.
North on Broadway?
Yes.
To the community center?
Yes, to 66 and Broadway.
I just wanted to clarify that for the audience. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. And that is the route that, um, from what we understand, I don't remember, but they, we were told that this was the original route. We always started south and went north, not north to south.
That was the original route?
Yes. So we're kind of going back to the original route and adding in the sensory-friendly area.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, the, next is the semi-quincentennial committee report.
Well, very good, Madam Vice President. No, you did say it correctly, but I have nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. We'll move on to our Department and Commission reports. Stormwater Management, Matt Lake.
Thank you. Um, as I had mentioned before, we had been audited by ITIM for MS4 compliance and did pretty well in the audit. And I was down at the MS4 annual meeting, uh, as, it was on the day of our last council meeting. That's why I wasn't here presenting on regional partnerships. And we brought up the, uh, the audits and things like that, had a nice discussion on how we were the first in the region to get audited and went through some and went through some of the details there and tried to, you know, again, we all try to encourage each other and, uh, gain compliance that way and share ideas. So it was a good collaboration, a good event to attend. Our Stormwater Board actually, um, landed on a new jet vac truck, uh, they wanted to do a, uh, vac con from best equipment. Uh, the amount was four hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and two dollars. And so, um, that was, uh, run through Sourcewell, so we got best pricing. And we got a trade-in of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for our existing jet vac truck, which is a pretty good number. And, um, so we're moving forward with that. The, uh, project at Sixteenth and Connecticut Street is almost done, few little things that tie up there and get that, uh, finalized. Our Hickory Ridge project, uh, we just had our groundbreaking, but in about four weeks, we'll probably have a ribbon cutting because, uh, they're so far along on the project, so, uh, it's going very quickly and it's been, uh, a very successful endeavor so far. And, uh, making some progress at Ninety-seventh and Grand, we got now two willing, uh, I would say ones, well, they're both sellers. One's an easement and the one's, uh, we're purchasing, uh, right away outright. So, uh, we got both, uh, parties to agree and so that's moving forward as well. And, um, we had a workshop on orchard maintenance, uh, at the Dean and Barbara White Community Center, so that went well as, also, so that's my report.
Oh, I have a question, Matt. Have you completed the cleaning of Kaiser Ditch?
I, I don't do that, that is Lake County.
Well, Lake County only owns a portion of it, we own a portion too.
No, uh, we own Taney Ditch, they own Kaiser.
The Taney Place Ditch.
Yeah, Taney is different from Kaiser, they both run parallel.
Right.
So Kaiser Ditch is a Lake County regulated drain, they do the maintenance, uh, we wouldn't do that, that would be like us doing, uh, resurfacing a county road, for example, we wouldn't touch a county road.
Well, have they done it?
They have not, um, so that would be up to them. I did approach Bill Emerson, I talked to him about it.
What did he say?
Um, well, they're gonna be looking at it, so they can't make any promises on deadlines or things like that. They're gonna do Turkey Creek portions of that first.
Okay.
And then they're gonna move over to Kaiser Ditch more, more than likely, so.
Well, the Taney Place Ditch on our Maryville side.
Yes.
You have completed that, the cleaning.
The, we do maintenance on that in terms of like complete, um, uh, you know, cleaning of the, the trees and the vegetation. Once, like every other year, we do that.
Okay.
So it'll be.
I had calls that there's a lot of branches in that ditch.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure they're not confusing Taney Ditch.
No, I know.
Kaiser Ditch.
North of McDonald's, that would be the Taney Place Ditch.
That's, that's Taney there.
That's correct.
It's around.
Well, that's where I had the calls.
And if you have a call, have them call me, because I will directly go out there and meet with that individual.
Okay, Matt, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt, I have a question for you.
Sure.
So, uh, I know that if a river is running through your property, you don't have a right, uh, to divert the river.
There is, Indiana drainage law is very strict on that, because what you do affects everybody else. So if there is a waterway, uh, going through your property, you can't block or divert it, things like that. So, uh, very important and critical for everybody that, uh, shares that resource in terms of drainage.
Sure, so who's responsible for maintaining all of the things that come along with having a, a waterway coming through your property?
There are private property maintenance responsibilities, I have a ditch in my backyard, so I take care of it.
Yeah, okay.
But yeah, unless there's easements that direct otherwise.
Okay, I was trying to get something at no cost.
I know that's right. Thank you, um, Matt. The Northern Indiana Regional Planning Commission, Counselor Hardaway?
Yes, we had a meeting recently, uh, first week in May, I think, May fifteenth, can't remember the date. Um, but what we discussed in length was some changes to the language in a few of the resolutions um, that the current administration federally wanted removed. So in order to meet the, um, or to qualify for federal funds, we had to go through a bunch of resolutions. Let's just change some wording, uh, we don't want to stop or we don't want to not qualify for a lot of the grants that come federally through NERC, so that was a big portion of the meeting. Other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Thank you. Next is Lake County Solid Waste. I did attend the Lake County Solid Waste meeting last Thursday. Um, not a whole lot of new updates. The new, um, ha- household hazardous waste collection date is on May the thirty-first. It's on a Saturday from nine to one. It's in Gary at the Hudson Campbell Center on four fifty-five Massachusetts Street in Gary. Um, and they are doing paper shredding at that location also. And that's all for that report.
What time is it gonna be?
Nine to one. Uh, shared ethics. Counselor Hardaway?
We have training, uh, this Thursday.
Yes.
From five, starting at five-thirty at the Avalon. So if you guys have not signed up for training, please make sure that you sign up for ethics training for this Thursday at five-thirty at Avalon. Concludes my report.
Um, okay, Fire Territory Board, I don't have anything, I don't know if you do.
I do not have anything.
Okay. Um, Clerk Treasurer's Office, Eric January, you have anything else you would like to add?
Just, just something, uh, very, uh, brief, uh, and this is something really for the, uh, counselors. Uh, I was looking at some of the, the number of people that have not renewed their business licenses that are still in business. I don't know if we need to talk to code enforcement about it, but it's at least two hundred and forty-one of them. And a lot of these, uh, businesses are still in business, some have gone out of business, uh, but there are a number of them that are still in business. And, uh, in putting that in perspective, we have, uh, approved licenses of, uh, one thousand, one hundred and forty-three. But in, that's not including two hundred and forty-one that haven't renewed their license and a number of these businesses are still doing business in the town. And, uh, I think we need to, um, figure out how to enforce them renewing their license or doing something because it's, it's leaving money on the table, it's not fair to every other business owner, uh, that's paying the, uh, fees to have a licensed business in the town. And, um, that concludes my report, I can save the other stuff, uh, for a later date because I was gonna talk about the food and beverage tax and some lit, uh, stuff, but we can talk about that the next time.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Department reports, uh, Parks and Recreation, Jerry?
Yes, thank you, um, wanted to report that youth basketball and flag football are starting up here in the next week or two. Um, we have over a hundred and twenty youths signed up for the basketball league and over fifty-five signed up for the flag football league. Um, we also found out we'll, we will not have to use Hidden Lake as much for the practices. We're still gonna do the, uh, tournament there, but Pop Warner, I believe they are not having their flag football play on our field this, uh, summer, so we'll have more availability for our league to play there. Um, the father-daughter dance is June thirteenth from five to seven. Um, and, uh, also encouraging everyone to go to maryvilleparks dot rec, recdesk dot com. Um, we have a ton of other activities that are open for all ages, um, so you can go ahead and browse there. It's got, gotten to the point where if I list them all out, we'll be here all night, so that's a good thing. Um, but I do encourage you to go look for yourself or you can look at our website, uh, Chaz has done a great job of, uh, creating access to all of our activities on there as well. Um, I did wanna point out, we, uh, discussed adding ADA access points to seven of our parks, um, the other day with Tagi and Steve. Um, and other than that, I don't have any other updates, so.
Great, thank you, sounds like you guys are doing a lot. Uh, Police Department, Chief Newses.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So as the weather's getting warmer, we're starting to see something that we haven't seen before, we're starting to see an influx of people coming into the town. Uh, we're busier than we've ever been, I don't ever remember it being this busy. Uh, to get an actual gauge, we would have to do a study, but just by, um, visual appearances, it looks like we're a lot busier with a lot more people that are coming. So what we've been doing is, uh, we're getting together, my command staff and I are getting together a, uh, process to, uh, get more officers in the public areas because you're starting to see more people at parks at that time of year. Bike paths, et cetera, we've been utilizing our drones, been utilizing our, um, some of our ATVs are side by side, um. We're gonna, you're gonna see more of that, we're gonna try and get more of our motorcycle police officers detailed out there. That way, people could see them out in public. So, um, the other thing that has been the concern and increasing concern has been, uh, traffic. We are trying to work into cycling, uh, different areas where we can actually do some type of traffic enforcement, but a lot of times you'll have two, three areas that need it in the same district for one officer. So we're kinda trying to figure out how we can do that. It's gonna be a continuous thing throughout the summer to keep the town safe. Uh, the other thing, code enforcement has been very, very busy this year already. It seems like, uh, the grass and the weeds just kind of popped up overnight and nobody can keep up. So I just wanted to let everybody know that they are working, just bear with them, they are getting to, uh, all the complaints that they can, but they also have the long, uh, or the excessive or noxious weeds and, and tall grass that they are doing. So we haven't forgotten about anybody, we're just trying to play catch-up. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, planning and building, Sheila Shine.
She's not over there, she's gone.
Oh, she's not there? She was here earlier, I can't see, I'm sorry. Uh, then, Street Department, Mr. King.
So just to recap on, uh, Councilwoman Uselak, we are, uh, in the height of, height of planting. We planted some stuff here at Town Hall, um, we started the planting on Ninety-third Avenue. Um, Thursday and Friday of this week, we're gonna have all hands on deck and we are gonna hopefully wrap up this planting where all we have to do is water. Um, I'm hoping that's the goal. Um, also, the, uh, paving program, just a couple highlights. Uh, to date, we've laid, uh, over twenty thousand tons of asphalt, twenty thousand, two hundred and thirteen point four tons. And we have replaced, removed and replaced, uh, forty-five hundred feet of curb and gutter. So that's just a couple highlights, so, and we are out of speed humps. I was up at North Barn today, we've got a couple pieces here and there, uh, for repairs, but the speed humps are gone.
All right. That concludes your report?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, our town manager, Mr. Griffin?
Madam President, members of the council, Mr. January, you have, I believe, been distributed to each, uh, the standard report prepared by Ms. Rosas that features all of the department head reports to you, uh, that responded. Where sometimes people are so busy, we're, we're gonna have to get them to be more timely about that, please read that at your leisure. I do wanna add something, I ordinarily wouldn't take this time for that. However, in order to make staff have more time in the Street Department to do the job of park care that we are tasking them with at least in the interim for the summer, we're gonna try and experiment with having contractors give us quotes and that they would be called out for enforcement of the, we call it noxious weed in our code, it's basically grass that's over eight inches. Uh, I concluded the call for proposals on Friday, I indicated they had to give me hourly and I think I'll refine it next time. I got hourly, some of them told me it was hourly period and some told me hourly per person and that doesn't give us a kind of certainty that we need. I do intend, because it is a service, I'm gonna meet with the people that did respond, I was happy to get that. And then I may ask them to either refine what they have, since it's a service, or return. But our goal is that we would have them basically go from twenty twenty-five into the beginning of twenty twenty-six and if it's affordable and the council favors this, we'll continue this. Because the contract would be in excess of fifteen thousand dollars, I will have to bring that back to you to agree to it. Uh, but I wanted to let you know that we are working on that alternative. We think it can help free up staff time for him to do the things he needs to do in the park and perhaps we can get, uh, quicker response, although we don't, it's really never been a problem with them, about getting into some of the places. But I wanted to let you know that the, that is an ongoing process and we hope to be able at the next meeting to deliver a better answer for you. Unless there's questions about the report, I'll be seated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, moving on to general, did you have something?
Yeah, going back, Mr. King, um, were you aware that there was a, um, a tree that's down on the new bike path over there by, uh, your neighborhood, uh, what's the name of your neighborhood? There, there's a tree that's down and it's, uh, blocking anybody from passing without getting off their balk, uh, bike or, or walking around it.
Okay, well, look, uh, we, there was some earlier today, we had to go remove two, so I'll make sure we get that one.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to general ordinance, we have one first reading ordinance, ordinance twenty-five dash twelve. Uh, this is an ordinance to amend, uh, chapter thirteen point five of the Maryville Municipal Code, establishing a more formal Parks and Recreation Department pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash ten dash three. I believe we kinda spoke on this this evening already?
Yes, we did, Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve twenty-five dash twelve A.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve by Shawna Pettit, uh, second by, um, Counselor Uselak. Any discussion by the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, can we get a roll call?
Yes, Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Okay, six in favor, motion carries. Moving on, we have a few second readings, ordinance twenty-five dash thirteen. Ordinance transferring, this is twenty-five thirteen, yeah, ordinance transferring, uh, dormant funds, uh, balances not raised um, by either a general or special tax levy and authorizing transfers pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash one dash three.
So moved.
Second. Uh, motion by Counselor, um, Uselak, second by Counselor Shee. Any discussion by the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, can we get a roll call?
Sure, Mr. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Okay, six in favor, motion carries.
We thank the council, and by we, I mean, Mr. January and I thank the council.
Our next ordinance is ordinance twenty-five dash fifteen, an ordinance to further amend the Maryville Municipal Code to modify the existing fees associated with towing services, towing services incidents to a law enforcement call.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by, uh, Counselor Uselak, second by Chandler, I'm sorry, I gotta get your last name mixed up, Chandler Felton. Any discussion by the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, can we get a roll call?
Yes, Mrs. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six in favor, motion carries. Our last one is, uh, ordinance twenty-five dash sixteen, an ordinance to further amend the Maryville Municipal Code to modify the existing fees associated with fingerprints incidents to a law enforcement call.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, motion by Counselor, uh, Uselak, second by Counselor Chas- Chancellor Felton. Uh, any discussion by the council? Hearing none, Mr. January, roll call?
Yes, Mrs. President. Vice President Neal?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes Edwards?
Aye.
Councilwoman Chandler Felton?
Aye.
Councilwoman Uselak?
Yes.
Councilman Pettit?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hardaway?
Yes.
Six in favor.
Six in favor and the motion carries. Uh, moving on tonight, we have no BZ and large gatherings, no old business, no new business, public comment. Uh, please state your name and address for the record and limit your comment to three minutes.
Brian Messarch, two oh one East Fifty-Eighth Place. Um, Madam Vice President, uh, thank you for hearing us. Uh, I'd first like to start off, uh, thanking, uh, Chief Newses and the Maryville Police Department. They gave a, um, excellent presentation on last Thursday. They met with, uh, the public and residents, um, and I appreciate their ongoing outreach. They had, uh, the canons there, they had their vehicles and lights on, um, they answered a lot of questions. Um, I really appreciate the fact that they're, um, addressing some of the concerns, uh, traffic, neighborhood safety and especially the parks and the trail safety. So I just wanted to give them a shout-out, I really appreciate that. Um, also on Thursday, I attended, um, the Parks Meeting and, uh, I would like, I've thanked a lot of people, but and I know that Mr. McCartney is, um, new, but Jerry is doing a bang-up job over there and Lisa and, and Chris supporting him. The amount of activities are starting to roll in is impressive, um, when they are, um, asking for more and more help because there's more and more people basically at the place. And, um, I know that, um, it's, um, it's, it makes me proud to see that that center that, uh, years ago was kind of a little bit, um, a ghost town, it's just now packed with people, so, um, a shout-out. Um, I, I'm really liking the way the, the parks and the, uh, the rec center and the community centers going, it's, they're, they're doing an awesome job. So I just wanted to, uh,